Now, good morning. What a glorious day today is.
Amen.
Anybody who walked in out there and saw the beautiful sunshine and nice breeze, this is just a fabulous day. And I'm just really glad that we all are here today. I'd like to call to order the official meeting, regular meeting of Mobile County Commission for April 14th, 2025. At this time, I would ask Pastor Tony Legere from the Mobile Police Department to join us for the invocation where we all stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner Ludgood. Thank you, Commissioner Hussin. A pleasure to be back, Commissioner Dewitt. I appreciate being invited now twice in one year. What an honor. It's a pleasure to come and serve our community here. Would you join me and let's pray together? Our Father, we give thanks to you today in the strong name of your Son, Jesus. We're mindful of your word that states, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." As we gather in this hallowed room today, we celebrate, Lord, the life and victory of 1,644 square miles of Mobile County, over 400,000 people. Today, Lord, just a few of us stand at the gates of this community and humble ourselves before you. Would you favor us with your mind and even the spirit of peace? And we give you thanks in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will ask Shandra Brown, Executive Director of Lifelines Counseling, and Sophia Oatland from Victim Advocate at Lifelines to join us for a resolution.
In observance of Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Mobile County, whereas the Rape Crisis Center has provided comfort and support to sexual assault victims in this community for 47 years, bringing awareness and education to the masses while offering high-quality assistance to those in need, and whereas the Rape Crisis Center provides 24-hour support to sexual assault victims and their families through direct services, prevention education, and professional training to all residents of Mobile County, and whereas the Rape Crisis Center provides community education and prevention programs for youth and the community on sexual assault issues, and during 2024, the Rape Crisis Center and outreach and education staff presented 401 programs to 7,113 students and individuals in Mobile, Washington, and Clark Counties. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center serves a cross-section of people of various races, socioeconomic, and educational levels, in 2024, the center provided 424 crisis phone calls, 214 hospital calls, 90 crisis intervention office visits, 759 follow-up victim support calls, court advocacy, family and friends support, clothing bank, dolls and bears given to child victims, 103 hospital clothing bags given to adult victims, 79 emergency transportation provided, 94 law enforcement accompaniment, 151 education and referrals to community agencies. And now therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission proclaims the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Mobile County. We applaud the Rape Crisis Center for the services it provides to the community. We encourage Mobile County residents to work together to address and prevent sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Together we act, united we change. And this is signed by all three commissioners and attested by our administration.
On behalf of Lifelines Counseling Services and the Rape Crisis Center, we want to thank you for recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The work that we do can be challenging. What we see and what we hear every day can be difficult, but knowing that we have the support of you all and our community makes this work a little bit easier. Thank you so much. We always have a need for volunteers in our agency, so if anybody would like to volunteer, reach out to us and we'd love to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. We've got a full house today, looking good. It is our pleasure today to acknowledge a group of young people who have had superior ratings at the state level for nearly a decade. These are band students at Cranford Burns Middle School, the director, Mr. Stephen Berry. Mr. Berry, if you'll come on down and join us, we have certificates today for these students. This year, the band made perfect scores across the board, meaning that none of the four judges could find any reason to deduct any points. Wow, this is, and it's truly a rare feat that certainly does not happen often. Has this ever happened before to Cranford Burns?
No.
No. The first time. And as many of you recall, the Cranford Burns Advanced Band, they come every holiday season around Christmas time and they do a performance. They've done it for seven years in a row, and it is truly a wonderful performance. Eight, will be, oh, eight years. It will be, it will be eight years. Yeah, I got it right. But we enjoy it and a lot of our staff and people who come, they just come to listen because they do such a great job. You never know, it's a middle school band. They are truly superior. So what we will do, Mr. Berry, is we have a lot of certificates here today, and I know all the students aren't in attendance, so if you would like to read off the names and we'll have them come forward and then we can have a picture with everybody with the, or we can either take the certificates back to the school. Which would be, which do you think, Dina? Which are we prepared to do? Anything? Okay, well, then I think it's a good idea. We'll just read through the names and as they, if they're in attendance, we'll give them the certificates now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I'm getting older and I don't remember everybody's name, so.
You don't have the list?
I don't have the list. I sent you guys a list. Okay, but I can still recognize. Can I just say the names and then we'll get everybody to come down here for a picture? So I think first we have William Butler, standard William, Michaela McCants, Ja'kiria King, Sophie Williams, Kyrie Hoskins, Kamari Barnes, Soraya McGee. William, what's your last name? William Lipscomb, Amina Tapia, Kanaya Martin, Angie Ullenticum, yes, Christopher Fairbanks? It's escaping me. Shelton Hill, Alex Dennis, next row, William, why don't y'all just come on down? You're in the front first, and then we'll get the second row back here. Ava Ken, Lance Waller, Manala Bradley, Shaw, what's your last name? Sedito? Give it to me. Taylor Best, Jill McDuffie, Naianna Evans, Catalina Pentolosa, Brandon Wade, Jacayla Fuller, Trinity Campbell, Kimaria Williams, Tyler Thompson, Trinity Jones. That's everybody, y'all. Come on down. Oh, I'm sorry. Toby Douglas, Isaac Ward, give it to me. Jahaden Turner. Thank you. While they're walking down, I'd like to personally thank Commissioner Dewitt, I'm sorry, for doing such a great job, Commissioner Ludgood, and last but not least, Commissioner Connie Hussin. They didn't know I was gonna do this, but about 10 years ago, I prayed for an angel to come in to help my babies and our school and our program. These commissioners have been nothing but amazing because we had the talent, we just didn't have the means to produce the sounds that we wanted to do. And thanks to our great commissioners, we are able to year after year achieve the highest levels of musicianship and build a program that we can be proud of. Commissioner Hussin, thank you so much. Let's give it up for them, please.
Mr. Kerr, would you read the first item on our regular agenda, please?
Speakers, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Regular speakers.
We have.
Yes, and there are nine regular speakers signed up. The first is Cindy Knowlton with Alabama Extension Service, and then we have eight speakers who are here to talk about Agenda Item 68 and 69.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Knowlton, County Extension Director for Mobile County Extension, 1070 Schillinger Road. Just want to take this opportunity to thank you once again for your support, and we appreciate it very much and to please come out and visit us. I have all but one of the educators out there serving our counties today in the atrium, and we have our program area materials and giveaways as well, and some popcorn, too. So come by and say hi to us, and we'd appreciate it as we appreciate the three of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Are you back in the building with the new roof yet?
No, we are not. So slow progress. This is our third week out. Parking lot's a mess, but I hope that's a good mess.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have eight remaining speakers for Agenda Items 68 and 69. Due to the quantity, maxed at just four minutes. So our first speaker is Mr. Michael McDonald, and he's here to address the commission on Item Number 68. Sir, I will alert you when you have one minute left to speak and 30 seconds left to speak and a bell will ring when your time is up. So, Mr. McDonald, if you would come down. Make sure to speak directly into the microphone and to state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Michael McDonald, and I live in Dawes Creek subdivision. It's off the Dawes Lane Extension. I'm here to protest against the new subdivision they want to build behind, next door to my neighborhood because the amount of lots looks like it's gonna be lower-income houses, and it's probably gonna bring down the value of our home, plus we have flooding issues between here and there that's gonna cause more in our neighborhood. That's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the same topic is Mr. Brandon McLean.
Let me, I'm gonna interrupt. Tim, if you don't mind, I know that you're prepared to speak on some of this, so once all the speakers have, then you can speak if you don't mind.
Okay. Brandon?
My name is Brandon McLean. I'm a property owner at 5400 Churchill Downs Avenue, and I'm here against the current plat for the Preserve subdivision due to the current problems we have from a recent subdivision on some land I sold that is affecting me as a adjoining property owner and my neighbors. It's depleted the quality of our lake. The contractor's not taking any improvements. It's eroded a dam and it's caused silt erosion into it. Not to mention Dawes Creek and Dawes Oak started the erosion problem 20 years ago when they built these subdivisions and discharged them into the lake that my grandfather built in 1962. The county took no steps to help us mitigate the erosion. My grandfather come out of pocket back in the 2000s and dredged the area, and we built a dam to help slow the erosion of silt discharge into our lake. Since then, with all these subdivisions tying into the same drainage easement, we can't handle it. We have record flooding now off of this due to the drainage direction that's coming across. We had 11 inches, 11 and a half inches the other day, and the water was as high as it was almost in Hurricane Katrina. So there definitely needs to be some revisions done on this for the drainage for the downstream property owners. Mr. Kelly right here owns the bottom half of the lake, I own the top half, and we're not satisfied with the results we're getting right now. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker on Item Number 69 is Kathleen McDole. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record and speak directly into the mic.
Yes, Kathleen McDole, 2431 Redmond Street, Mobile, Alabama 36617. I am here on behalf of my uncle Ernest Collins, which lives on Monroe's Island, and I just wanted to know if this subdivision they're talking about, what is it, Long Gate? I'm sorry, Longwood Estates. And just need to explain if there, will it interfere? My grandparents had 20 children, and when they had it subdivided, I think it was like 14 lots, and two, I think of those lots were recently sold this year. So I didn't know if that was concerning that area.
I will have, I will have Tim, excuse, if it's okay, because that is a separate subdivision of three lots, and I will let him explain this one separately because it's not referring to the subdivision in Item Number 68, which is the Preserve. Are you familiar with this three-lot subdivision on the Longwood Estates?
That's Item 68.
Yes, that she's, yes, it's grouped in with these others. This is a.
Yeah, that is a preliminary and final plat of Longwood Estates, three subdivisions. River Drive, is that right, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, that is a minor subdivision that we have, is three lots. I will be happy to give you a copy of the plat after this meeting, and I can answer any specific questions you have about it, if you don't mind that.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Faith Stafford, also on Agenda Item 69. Make sure to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Faith Stafford, and my address is 6131-A Highway 90 West, and I'm concerned a little bit about, I, well, I don't even know what I'm wanting, really. Maybe to speak to the engineer or something, county engineer, I don't know. But we had bought the easement from Leon Atkinson's family way back when, and because when we bought the property, there was this, no easement to my land. And so it was a big, you know, thing, problem. How do you get to your land, a helicopter or something? Anyway, we had to buy our easement from two people. Anyway, it's a long story, but I'm just concerned if this thing is gonna take my easement away or, because it's pretty long back into, you know, pretty, pretty, like a quarter of a mile or something. And also, are they gonna build a fence, a privacy fence, containing their project or whatever, you know, the subdivision thing, the industrial subdivision? So I want to make sure they're gonna build a privacy fence.
Miss Stafford, so you're saying you had to get an easement to be able to get access to your property?
Yeah, I've been there almost 40 years, kind of thing.
And you just want to make sure that whatever is happening is not going to impact the access to your property?
Right. We had about 15 feet on one side from Leon Atkinson, and then Odie Dickerson had the, he had illegally obtained my easement because, anyway, that's, it's a long story, but we went through court and everything, and then my daddy bought the property. And it all happened when my daddy bought the property that we got the easement straightened out and everything, so. Anyway, I don't know what to say.
I think, Tim, right behind you can maybe answer some of the questions as far as your easement. And it may be easier, Tim, for some of these, if you want to get with them after the meeting and let's make sure that her easement isn't gonna be affected and what we can regulate the person requesting the subdivision to do as far as a fence or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the easement that she's talking about, but I'll be happy to sit down.
I'm assuming it's this Mobile Oaks Industrial Subdivision on Highway 90, ma'am? Is that correct?
That's what it sounded like.
That's the existing R and R park, like they're on 9.
I'm sorry, which one?
The very last one on 69.
Okay.
It's a preliminary and final plat of Mobile Oaks Industrial Subdivision, two lots on Highway 90. Is that correct? That's where you're at. I heard you say OD's, and then I heard you.
Yeah, it's, it's now.
It's a new one, it's been bought so many times the last four years.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it was Johnny, it used to be Johnny, it was OD's and then Johnny's, and I'm not, I'm not sure who the owner is.
Yeah, I'll be happy to talk to them and get this straightened out and answered.
Is that sufficient, ma'am?
Yeah.
If not, Tim, give her my number and you can call me if you need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next four speakers are all about Item Number 68. Chubbly Brunette Bruet. I'm sure, I butchered that name.
It's a little hard to understand.
Chubbly Bruet.
Kobe.
Kobe.
Yeah, H is silent, it's a tough name.
Okay.
Toby Burnett?
Bruet.
Bruet.
Kobe Bruet.
Just spell it, please.
C-H-O-V-E-E. It's a Y and the H is silent, so you wouldn't, wouldn't be able to pronounce it. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a resident of 8826 Belmont Park Drive. Aside from my time in the service, I've resided there for 50 years. I'm here today to voice my concern. I'm speaking a little fast because I got a lot to say about the development that is proposed here, the Preserve, which I have, I guess you guys have copies of the plats, but I made copies. This is a small parcel of land in between developments that are already existing. It breaks down to 90, almost 90 lots. Some of these lots are less than the square footage of homes that are built in the area. We're currently, I'm with Bo and Mr. Kelly and some of my other neighbors, we're currently having a tremendous problem of water draining into our lake. It is springtime. Our lake is normally five to six foot deep clear for the fish to spawn. It looks like a dirt pit right now. The corners of the lake, I can provide pictures to you, have trash in them, tree limbs, debris that we've never had. My parents lived on this lake, and they've moved on, but we've never had these issues. This lake is the founding, it's the two starting springs to Fowl River. It is the beginning of Fowl River that is known to the county, that is known to the state. It feeds a lower lake, and it has some sensitive estuary areas which are, it has a private dam. This dam has blown out before and was a great expense to my neighbor to fix. Our dam has blown out before to an expense of Mobile County taxpayers, over a million dollars to repair. And on top of that, we're seeing more growth on Dawes Lane behind us with no representation, just trees being pushed down there, no drainage expanded, no plan for all this water, and across from my house, now we're being told we maybe have a proposed dirt pit and more construction. And across from my house, now we're being told we maybe have a proposed dirt pit and more construction. So, I'm asking you for help with this better planning. We, we don't seem to get anywhere. We all tried the natural process of speaking to the builders, speaking, you know, the, the engineer that allowed this design didn't even allow for the amount of slope on the property, so they can't hold the water. Their, their ponds, retention ponds were inadequate. I don't understand, with the sensitivity where we were, there was not more considerations taken. They, they weren't concerned with seeding the property, they weren't concerned with sowing their pond. We're seeing dirt going to McDonald Road. We're seeing, you know, dirt go into our lake every time. So, we have to go, on average, about three to four weeks to clear the lake up now after a rainstorm. And I'm just seeking some representation to help us with this substantial growth in our community. And from what I'm understanding, um, the major developer in our county, which everybody knows who that is, is seeking to add more lots in every area around us. They already own the property. So, if they own the property and they're going to develop it, let's at least ask them to do the right thing. We fall within the requirements of city planning because we're now within five miles of the city. We ask for the city to have some oversight. Mr. Doitt has done all he can. He has came out, he has helped us. His hands are tied with some of these, so we need the power of the city and the county, like Baldwin County is doing, and expand some of the standards when you see an issue and require them to do more. Because this is it. This is all we have left. It's the last parcel of land in the county that look like what we have, and it's not just cookie cutter houses on top of each other. And it's a beautiful area to live, and I'd like to preserve it as long as we can. And if I can get a confirmation from you three guys, I would love to know that you are going to help us pursue this and represent the taxpayers of Mobile County. I know that development's going to happen, but I'm asking you to require these developers to control their runoff. Dirt is a pollutant to this system. This is going directly to Fowl River. Fowl River is an abicable water, so we need it protected too.
Kobe, thank you. If I may, and I know Tim's going to come up here and speak after me. I've been
There's three more.
Oh, is there?
Three more.
Kobe, just stand by, and I'll, I'll say what I have to say. We have some more.
Our next, our next speaker is Joey Tuberville on the same topic.
You can go, you, you can have a seat. Just don't leave. Jay.
State your name and address for the record, and please speak into the mic.
So, Joey Tuberville, five-three-nine-two Dolls Lane Extension. Okay. So, I've been in this area for about fourteen years. I own, uh, lots one, two, three, four of Atchison State, south of the development. Ninety-four homes. It's going to generate a lot of, uh, noise, and then parking. If you calculate two vehicles, that's roughly eighty-eight automobiles. Water's a big issue in our area. And it runs through my property, all the way over to Co Light. Putting, uh, putting the drainage in is going to create more water and direct, you know, you have no where for the runoff to go right now, so. Also, putting a drainage easement along my property, which is south of the development, is going to create a lot more mosquitoes for my family and animals, um, also pushing the water over on me. We, we were boarding a horse last year, and the horse wasn't up to date on its annual vaccinations. We didn't know about this, but the horse can, uh, it got encephalitis, which is west now, and we lost her. She, she stayed on the backside of the property, which is close to the wetlands. There's two sections of wetlands in the development, and there's a lot of mosquitoes back there. I personally wouldn't put my horses on this property because of the sinkholes and underground springs. There's some holes over there, which I have pictures and videos of. You can hear water running through all the time. And they're approximately twenty-five foot deep, and there's approximately ten foot of water in them. So, if you dig in for your drainage, and you hit these, they've got more water. Should this development happen, um, I think the I think the homes need to be approximate size to the surroundings. Most homes in our area is five-plus acres on Dolls Lane Extension, and a minimum of two thousand square foot. The subdivision, at minimum, needs to be similar to Dolls Creek, with larger homes and lots. Also, privacy fence, trees need to be erected along my property line, adjacent to mine, to maintain, uh, the homes, or adjacent to mine, you know, for, for privacy and protection of my family and animals. I have roughly eighty, eighty animals on the property of roughly twenty, twenty-nine acres. We have a small business there. And, I mean, it's going to affect me and my family and neighbors and, and all of us. And like I said, um, you know, I have pictures of the water. The water is it's crazy, the amount of water that flows through there. I don't think many people have seen it. And the holes, I mean, I wouldn't want my kids running around in that field, uh, taking a chance to fall in. It's been farmed for years, and all the holes get covered up, but they eventually show back up. So, you know, I appreciate just you all taking consideration to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two more speakers on the same topic. Mr. Tim Lawley.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tim Lawley with Sawgrass Engineering. Um, I'm here on behalf of the owner and developer of one of our homes. Um, I'm just here to answer any questions, if y'all have them. I'd be happy to wait till everybody else has spoken. Tim, Mr. Wickers had a chance to speak, and if y'all need me to come back up here and address anything, that way I can catch it all at one time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the final speaker on that topic is Pat Jones.
Mr. Kel, I thought Mr. Kelly's here. Was he going to speak, Mr. Kelly? If you don't, I don't know if he
He didn't sign in for that one. He signed in for the other, the public hearing.
Which, I thought you, Mr. Kelly's probably here for, uh, tell me why you're here, Mr. Kelly.
My name is John Kelly. I reside at eighty-seven fifty Belmont Park Drive. I've been there approximately forty years. And thank you, Mr. Doitt, for coming meeting with me, and I appreciate everything you're trying to do, but I realize your hands are tied somewhat, and also the other county commissioners. Because, you know, we need, and you guys need a little bit more power to stop some of these things that are going on in the county with some of the contractors. Horton Builders, most, every one of you have heard of Horton Builders that, that are here. America's largest builder. And it seems like when they come in to a community, they basically take over, who sells the property to them, and I understand, uh, uh, Bo, as we know him here, that owns a dirt pit up there at Three Notch and McDonald Road, and owns the property which he inherited from his, he said, his grandfather, which is great. I don't have a problem with the subdivision because I created one myself, which was only eleven acres. We had requirements. We had twenty-four hundred square foot homes, I believe it was. And, and I've dealt with Adam also on this project of my own. Real familiar with Adam. I have talked not to Adam, but I've talked to Corps of Engineers, I've talked to Mr. Doitt, I just numerous people, even up to Montgomery. We need some help out there in controlling what's going on. They are putting a hundred and forty-five houses on fifty-foot lots up there. I don't know if, uh, Mr. McLean mentioned that or not. I, I think he did mention some amount of houses. One of the busiest intersections. What's going to happen to the traffic there? You figure two cars per residence, roughly three hundred cars that are trying to get across McDonald Road on the Theodore Dolls or, or Three Notch. We have some serious problems, our lake out there. Like I said, I've lived there, I think thirty-eight years. My sons grew up, I have a son that's with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, we need something done out there. And I understand that the general contractor is a Mr. Jeremy Hunt. Is that correct? Okay, okay. I don't know who Mr. McLean sold that property to. It may have been Jeremy Hunt. But the contract and the permit was issued to Horton Builders. Mr. Hunt's firm has been out there, working out there for about four or five, six months. Also, Mr. Hunt had no permit. Adam sent it, the Horton Builders, a warning, which is nothing no good. And guess what? Horton Builders required Mr. Jeremy Hunt to purchase a permit. But, you know, we're asking for some help up there. The residents, we just had one new home built on the lake, half million dollar house. One across the lake from me sold for about five hundred thousand. And I've only seen water up to my dock, which I probably have one of the highest docks on the lake out there. Uh, I bought the twenty acres from the prior residents that I bought my home from. I think approximately thirty acres in that lake. I, I don't know, is that correct? Okay. And also, you have a, a little, some crates or something coming from that pond up there and the springs. Am I correct? And did you also install a dam up there?
Yeah.
Okay. What's happened to your dam? Okay. These last two, uh, floods we've had has been tremendous. Uh, it was almost up over my dock, I would say within inch. But Horton Builders and Mr. Hunt, yeah, I think they're digging themselves a hole. And, you know, we want to try to help them any way we can. We are not trying to stop the subdivision. We trying to keep our lake clean and fresh. You know, we've had a lot of enjoyment out there. All of us, all of us residents have.
Mr. Kelly, your, I think your time has expired. I'll, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we do have a busy
I thought you gave me thirty seconds.
Well, the bell rang. I'll, I'll get in touch with you. And I, I didn't mean to interrupt, Cherie, but I figured, Mr. Kelly, I know where he lives, and I've been there, so I knew he was probably here about. I didn't mean to interrupt the flow of things.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, we still have one more person on the topic of agenda item sixty-eight, and that is Pat Jones. And then after that person speaks, if Timothy, if you'll come back to the mic.
Hey, I'm Pat Jones. Um, I live at five-two-six-nine Dolls Lane Extension. I live directly across the street where they're proposing this new subdivision. I've lived at my home for almost twenty-five years, and I've seen a lot of changes on Dolls Lane Extension. The current traffic situation right now on Dolls Lane Extension is already really, really congested. The traffic is heavy because we currently have Dolls Oak and Dolls Lane subdivision that travel Dolls Lane, uh, extension daily. And they, you, we've already talked about how many cars that, that generates, but it generates approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-plus cars daily on our road, if you, if you figure two cars per house. The subdivision that you're proposing now is another subdivision with ninety-four homes on a small plot of land, uh, just like Dolls Oak. If they approve this, they'll be adding at least another hundred-and-eighty-eight or more cars traveling on Dolls Lane Extension daily. Um, flooding, like they've said, is already an issue. The, the land slants, the property slants. The water from these subdivisions run directly across the street onto my property. The settling ponds cannot handle and do not handle the amount of water that, that comes off that property. We have a wonderful community. We have kids riding bikes, four-wheelers, horses, and people walking up and down the streets all the time. Uh, and this is done in the street because we don't have any sidewalks. We have no speed bumps of any, any way to slow down the traffic, so additional traffic will put these people doing these activities in greater danger. Uh, if the subdivision is approved, we have, we must, or, excuse me, if the subdivision is approved, we will have increased traffic, more crime, and our property will be devalued. I'm asking that the subdivision not be approved by the Mobile County Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, before you start, let me, can I say a few words? Most, most of you people who live over there know me. I've been to your houses. I've came. And I'm going to say this, for four years, I've been on the county commission, and for four years, I have been complaining about when enough is enough on subdivisions. Everybody here knows that. Everybody who's ever heard, heard a complaint about a subdivision knows I say that. When I say that, I'm, I'm told that if the engineer for the home builder or the developer meets the regulations that, that we require, then we do not have a legal ground to stop a subdivision. Now, that's what I'm told. I, I wanted, I had a discussion on a side note just a moment ago with our attorney, because I've asked him a month or so ago, and I know he's doing some research on it. We live in a county that has no home rule and has no zoning. And so, what that means for us is when a subdivision, when they, and Tim or Matthew, both of you combined, can correct me if I am incorrect, but I have been told that if we, if they meet our regulations and we deny their subdivision, we will be sued, and we will lose that lawsuit because we do not have a right to stop them. Now, what I've asked the county attorney to look into is some sort of moratorium on some subdivisions. And I'm going to state my reasons again, like I have in the past, and I'm going to add a reason to it. Number one, public safety. Most of these subdivisions are being built in areas that are patrolled, and, and your calls are answered by the sheriff's office. Some of them have been pulled back even further because of a, a bill that was passed in Montgomery that has allowed the Mobile Police Department to pull out of the police jurisdiction, which overwhelms the sheriff's office with, with that area. Um, fire departments. Most of these subdivisions are being built in areas where there are volunteer fire departments. I live in the Seven Hills Fire District. Some, the one here is not. I think it's Theodore Dolls. The fire district that protects me and my family and my home has gone from three, from protecting three thousand residents to protecting over seven thousand residents on a volunteer fire department basis in the last five years. So, that's, that's my public safety concerns. My other concerns, I know we have another public hearing, but I want to say what I want to say about these subdivisions. My second concern, and y'all's, y'all, your kids will go to, I guess, Hankins and Theodore High School. My other concern is really further up with subdivisions that are taking place on a northern, northwest end of the county. All of those subdivisions are being built in the, uh, Causey Middle School and Baker High School school districts. Causey Middle School is the largest enrolled middle school in the state of Alabama. And the more houses you build, because we all know that these are new homes, they're new starter homes, and like some of you have mentioned, they're a little smaller homes for people who are starting a family. So, most of these people are going to have school-age kids, just like I do. I have a kid, I have a son at Causey. I have a son at Baker. Baker High School is the, is the second-largest enrolled high school in the state of Alabama. All right, so, that, that's my second reason, or third, or whatever reason I'm on, is because of, of, of the education of our children. We're overcrowding our schools. So, today I want to add, because this is just something that I think the county needs to look into, and that's a, a stormwater runoff study that I think we need to look at. Because every time we get a heavy rain, and we've had two in the last two months. I mean, we had a, uh, Mike's here, and I, and he can tell you, every time it rains, I just told him to automatically start sending me how much rain we got because I need to know. Every time that we get, and I understand this, this rain a couple of weeks ago, we got eleven inches of rain where I live in less than six hours. There's no, there's no drainage system in the country that I'm aware of that's going to handle that much rain. But every time it rains, I get videos and I get calls. So, I think the county, uh, one thing that we could do to help this is maybe do a Tina, maybe look into a, a stormwater runoff survey for the entire south end of the county, or the entire county for that matter. With that said, what I've proposed to Jay is, uh, or ask him to look into With that said, what I've proposed to Jay is, or ask him to look into, is some sort of moratorium on subdivisions in Mobile County. And when you do a moratorium like that, my understanding is you gotta have a solution. So my solution is this. We gotta make sure, number one, that our infrastructure that the county is responsible for can handle the amount of traffic that these subdivisions bring. Number two, we gotta make sure that we are equipped, public safety-wise, to handle that. And that means the sheriff's office, police department, or whoever, whomever, and also the fire departments are adequately equipped to handle it. And I guess the other is to make sure that, and I know there's a proposed school, I saw Johnny Hatcher from the school board commission here earlier. I know there's a proposed school in West Mobile that will help with some of that. So my proposal to Jay has been, let's check on a moratorium, let's make sure that we can handle all of these things. And if we can't, before we continue to allow subdivisions to be built, that we get, get this school finished, get the roads finished, and we do this storm, this stormwater runoff survey. As it stands today, I don't think we have a legal standing until Jay comes up with that to, to actually stop the preserve subdivision. And that's, I'm telling you that because I've been, I've been singing this same song that you guys are singing here today for the last five years, and that's the story I get every time. Now, Tim, you're welcome to address the issue. And if, if I'm incorrect in anything I said, then you correct me.
No, you, you hit, hit some really good points there. There was, with, dealing with the preserve, I'll, I'll start with there. I know there was a lot that, that we, that we went through. So the preserve, the site generally drains from, from west to east. There is a low area on the north that some of the property owners from the existing subdivision, I think it's Dawes Creek, backs up to some jurisdictional wetland areas. So the, from the plans that we saw, there's no proposed development inside the wetland areas. They're staying out of those wetland areas. They are creating a drainage swell, a drainage ditch to capture the water that's coming from the site, to keep it away from Dawes Creek, routing it through a detention area on the east side of the development, which is then discharged into a closed system on Dawes Lane Extension. So, that being said, the, with those, with that design, the engineer of record has to certify, part of the permitting conditions, part of the approval conditions, is that the engineer of record has to certify a drainage report that, that the drainage system that they designed met the standards that, that have been set forth in the subdivision regulations. And, and they have done that. We have that report. There's a, a statement in the report that says that the design, paraphrase, the design is not going to negatively impact any downstream properties. So that's what we have to, to base our conditions of approval on, is, is the design and the statement from the engineer of record.
Tim, how can these property owners and homeowners that live around be given further assurances of that?
So-
What, what, what is the protocol for addressing this further?
If, if it were, if it were me and my property, I would, I would start documenting now, documenting my existing conditions. If, when construction starts, document those, those conditions. You, I mean-
And where would they take these complaints?
They could complain to, we have an email address, they can send it to us. This development has, will have an ADEM permit as well. So ADEM has a, has a complaint form that you can go online. There are some wetlands on site. They're staying out of the wetlands. In this particular area that I'm, that I'm talking about, there's some other wetlands too that they might be disrupting, but these, these, but I'd have to go back and look.
So this, did this require any permitting by the Corps of Engineers?
For, for any development that disrupts wetlands, they will have to, jurisdictional wetlands, they will have to go through the Corps for permitting.
So this developer will have to get a Corps permit?
If they disturb any jurisdictional wetland areas, that is correct. And I can go back to the plans to see exactly what areas they are disturbing. But prior to any, any approvals that we give, we make sure that they have indicated to us that all necessary state and federal permits have been obtained.
So, Tim, let me ask you this. Their engineering firm submits a preliminary plat to you, correct?
Yes, correct.
And if it meets our regulations, which I'm, if I hear you correctly, this one does, and, and we approve it, which is what I'm being told by the le, the legal department, is that we don't have any choice to, but I'm, I'm looking further into that. What is their recourse if the developer doesn't adhere to the plans that their engineer turns over to them and they're, they start having problems? Because I think where it gets confusing is the, the county can't control what the developer does. Now, we do, we, we put stop work orders on several. We've reported several subdivisions recently, I'm talking in my district, to ADEM. But what is their recourse if the developer is not following the set of plans that they submit? I know what our recourse, our recourse is to report them to ADEM and do a stop work order. What is the resident's recourse at that point?
So, I mean, you can document the, the, the issues, and if we are shown issues from the public, we can, like you said, we can go out and put a stop work order on the development until such a time that the development does comply with, with the permitting conditions. And I, so another thing they could do, they could seek legal counsel as well and seek engineering consult, consultation as well to, to look at, to do kind of a second opinion of drainage studies. I know that probably gets very costly and maybe cost prohibitive, but that, that is something that's available.
No. Thank you.
No more speakers in advance of the meeting.
Let me, can, let me add one more thing. Either Koby or Mr. Kelly and the folks that live around there, what I would like for y'all to do and is, which of course, I'm coming anyway. When you guys call, you know I come. Let's get a coalition together with you guys, you, because I know y'all live right down the road from each other. And let's keep in touch on this, and when I get some answers from legal, Mr. Kelly or Koby, I'll call one of you guys.
Would you, would you come to the mic, please? Hold on, hold on, wait till you can hear.
The lakes that are behind me and beside me, they both have since the wetlands. This preserve project is not only my concern, it's the existing one that is affecting it. And you don't have to be a scientist to see red clay in water that's never existed and the residue that's left behind. The two lakes that are closest to us on Leroy Stevens are no longer existing. The dam blew out on them in the last storm. They are now dry. And the one on Cody Road, which is a little ways from us, same thing has happened. Overdevelopment caused it. There's no longer a lake at Cody Road in Mobile County. And that, that was there for years. People live on Lakeland Drive, Spring Lake Drive. They no longer live on a lake. It's a dry bed now. And, and that's what we're asking, not only, you know, the size limitations of these houses, but the consideration that water's gonna come off a roof and hit another house. So it's, it's the speed at which they're sending water to the lake, too. And, and I'm sorry to come back up and make another statement, but I didn't get to say that. There are cases in Mobile County where lakes that have existed for many, many years are gone now. And those are treasures for our county. You know, we don't have that everywhere. And one other thing, and I'll get, sit down, is the consideration of this neighborhood, I know developers need to develop, I know people need homes. But if I bought this same property on Magnolia Springs or Fish River, would more considerations be made? Or is it my financial status is not allowing me to have that protection from the resources I have in the county?
Well, you have, Baldwin County has limited home rule and we do not. That's, there's a huge difference in Baldwin County and Mobile County.
And so that, this battle might be lost for us, but please consider that in the future for planning and for, for my children and grandchildren if they stay in Mobile County, because it's gonna be an important thing to consider. All these costs are passed on to the home buyers anyway. I, I'm tired of developers acting like we're breaking the bank. D.R. Horton is the most profitable home builder in the United States. These costs are passed on to the buyers. And I know everybody needs an affordable home. I needed one, just like everybody else does. But you have to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, one more question about the lake. Now, I know that the developer has to have a report on, on runoff and how that's gonna be contained on the property during construction, but is, is there anyone inspecting the lake or the sensitive areas surrounding the development to ensure that, that they're in compliance on a regular basis? I mean, or is that up to the, the property owners to have to prove that also?
So we have, there's several different, in the timeline of construction, pre-construction, construction, post-construction. So the pre-construction, it goes through the process of all the conditions of approval, meeting the, more or less, the checklist of things, of items they have to provide to us to get the approval. So during construction, it is the engineer of record, whoever that might be, that oversees the construction and inspection process during construction. Now, there are some, some limited inspections that the county may do, especially if we receive complaints. We might go to the site and, and do an inspection. That's during construction. Post-construction, again, the engineer of record will, will provide as-built documentation to us, closeout final documentation saying that the project was, was built, was constructed to meet the minimum standards, was constructed to meet the conditions of the, of the plans. And there are also some post-construction covenants and restrictions that are associated with, with drainage systems. So inside of a development that has a property owners association, and there's a stormwater detention area, the stormwater detention area will be, will be maintained by that property owners association. And there are covenants recorded at probate that will, that will give guidance on how that maintenance should look. And, and so that, you know, as far as the enforcement, enforcement of those maintenance covenants, because we have no home rule, we have, we have very little authority after, after the construction on private property.
But you can conduct periodic inspections of the lake and other surrounding areas just to make sure that they're not, that we're not getting runoff?
So as, for this particular instance that they're, that they're, that these gentlemen have been talking about with Coal Lake, Belmont Park, yes, I have walked. I've walked the site personally around the, the actual active construction site and then went to the lake and, and, and made some observations. There may be some minor deficiencies in, in BNP's best management practices for erosion control. The engineer of record gave us a report saying, outlining what those deficiencies were, what they're gonna do to, to resolve those issues. No, I think Mr. Kelly mentioned a, a warning letter from, from ADEM. I, I was not a part of that process. I haven't seen that warning letter, I don't know. But no, no direct evidence was, was observed during our inspections, at the time of our inspection, that, that they weren't meeting the, a substantial, you know, compliance with the permit.
Maybe have to coincide with a storm event or something like that to really get a good understanding of how it's being impacted. Thank you, Tim.
Love it.
May I ask for my minute back that I didn't get? With Baldwin? Mr. Kelly, come to the mic. You asked for a minute, and that's what we're gonna, we're gonna have to monitor. Sorry.
Well, you know, I listened to Tim here. I talked to him on numerous occasions on the phone. He's a nice guy. And you, but I don't agree with him. If you, if I could get these photographs up here to each one of you, and you could see what our lake looked like. And I don't know if you'd be the same one, or maybe. Now, if that's not clay in that lake, maybe someone put some cake down there. You reckon? But now, we talk about the runoffs, and I'm sure him with ADEM, you may know what this is. Are you familiar with that, Dr.? Probably not. Well, anyway, this is a surface water runoff rights and responsibilities on the Alabama If you folks don't believe us, just ride out and come across the dam, which is owned by Mobile County, and take a look. So that's what I recommend, and we need help out there from, never mind, I'm, I'm getting upset.
Thank you. Jay, is there any other recourse to deal with these issues?
Commissioner Dewitt's asked me for some insight in law, and I'd let me complete my research where I speculate.
But as it stands now, is-
It, it's a difficult task. There might be some law for a moratorium, but it's, it's a complicated answer. So I'll have you an answer before the next meeting, for sure. We've been working on it.
Does you have anything you want to say on this before we move on?
No, I mean, I think I've, I think I've said, and I've asked Jay to look into it even before this came up, Mr. Kelly, the last time I came out, and I asked him to look into it. And it didn't have anything to do with this particular subdivision, it has to do with some other subdivisions. You know, I, like I've told you, that it affects everybody, it affects me. I mean, I just had seven hundred acres that had butts my property, sold to D.R. Horton, and they're gonna build two thousand homes on it. And that's not why I'm concerned. I'm, I'm concerned because I don't think it's gonna cause a stormwater runoff at my, on my property, because there's a creek between the two. But it's certainly concerning with that lake there behind you guys, you guys' house. I mean, I, I know that we have reported them and one other subdivision to ADEM, I know for a fact. So, but that's really it. And I, and I, but I will be in touch as soon as I can get some legal answers as to, this isn't nothing new to me. This isn't the first time anybody here's heard me say my concerns with subdivisions in Mobile County. And every time one comes up, just about, I bring up the fact that we, when is enough enough? When do we, when are we gonna catch up with infrastructure and public safety and the education of our children? And now, of course, the stormwater runoff issue that, that seems to be the latest on the two recent developments in my district. Thank y'all for being here today.
So we're gonna take a six-minute break and come back and resume?
Six minutes.
Six minutes.
Cherie, start your timer.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
Will you keep going?
We have one minute, so if you would begin finding your seats. Thank you. If someone would close the door, that might be a clue to the ones who are in the atrium that we're about to resume. Thank you.
How many speakers have we got?
Okay. Okay. We're about to resume our regular meeting. Please, if you plan to participate in this part of the meeting, I'd ask you to please be seated now. Kristin, would you close that door, please? Thank you.
Thank you. This is a bit of information. Our regular meetings begin with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And then any speakers who have come to speak on an issue on our agenda, we sign up, and then we go through that process. We're now about to begin our regular agenda, the first item of which is a public hearing. The public hearing process is different from our regular speakers. Our speakers might want to speak about anything. They might want to come and bring quilts. They may want to come and congratulate someone. That's what we just finished. That's the part we just finished. And now we're about to move to the form of the agenda. Mr. Kerr, if you would read the first item.
Item one. Hold public hearing on the application for local approval from TIGS Holdings for a proposed construction and demolition landfill on County Farm Road as required by Alabama Code.
This application was received in January. All the necessary advertisements have been completed. The online announcement of today's public hearing was held in February and March. The application was posted on Mobile County's website. The public hearing today will accept commentary for and against the Emerald Coast landfill permit application to inform commission deliberation. There will be no action taken today, but the commission must act within 30 days. The applicant will speak first and last. Cherie Broussard, who is our Public Affairs Director, will explain timing and call up speakers one at a time. I would ask that your comments be made to the commission and not across, back and forth between each other. This is, this information is intended to inform the decision that the commission must make. With that, we'll begin our hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. So as a reminder to everyone, I will call you up in the order in which you signed in. There are 15 speakers in addition to the applicant's representative. I'll remind everyone that they have three minutes to address the commission. At the one-minute mark, I will hold up a yellow flash card. And at the 30-second mark, I will hold up a white flash card. When your time is up, the bell will ring, at which time the speaker should return to his or her seat, and I will call up the next speaker.
Okay. We have a court reporter here. We're trying our best to capture all the comments that are made. It would be helpful if you know that you have an unusual last name, like hers is Eisenhower. So if you have a last name like that, if you would just spell it so that she can capture it correctly in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker for the public hearing is Mr. John Kelly. Mr. Kelly, will you come up?
He, Mr. Kelly, I think, signed up on the wrong list. He's the one who spoke on the Preserve subdivision.
Okay, thank you. So I apologize. The first speaker is going to be the applicant's representative, and that's Mr. Scott Hutchinson. So, Scott, thank you. I apologize.
My name is Scott Hutchinson. Sorry. Yes, ma'am. Scott Hutchinson with Goodwood, Milton, Kaywood. I'm an engineer and represent the client in this case. And we've completed the applications through the county, everything that Commissioner Loggett said. We've been through the process, and this is the latest, certainly not the last, but the latest step in that process is the public hearing. So I don't have a presentation to make, but I'll happily answer any questions that you have about the facility and the application. And then after the comments are made, if there's anything I can answer, I'll come back up and answer those as well. But for right now, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful if you just give an overview of the facility and what's planned.
Sure. This is a site that's on the north side of County Farm Road. It's an 80-acre site with 62 acres being set aside for disposal. This is a CND landfill. It's not a household waste landfill, certainly not a hazardous waste landfill. So this is construction, demolition, waste, non-pertressible, meaning it doesn't rot and smell like household garbage. And these are, so it's currently a dirt pit, sand gravel pit, in which there's trucks leaving that site with sand and clay going to construction sites. And this would convert it to accepting construction demolition waste, where the trucks will be coming in full, leaving empty, in reverse. And there, this is permitted ultimately through ADEM as a CND landfill. And this is the beginning process of that. They will not accept an application unless you have host community approval. In this case, the county commission is the host community. And we have to have your approval before we can take that next step and go to ADEM. Prior to getting to you, there were several other steps. Mobile County has a very stringent application process for these sites compared to any other county in the state. And we've been through that process. We've held a community meeting to allow the community to come out and speak. And as you would imagine, 99% of the people, I guess, say 100, were opposed to it. And you'll hear some of those again today, and I'll try to answer those questions. But one other thing to point out, in Mobile County, unlike other counties, we're not allowed to go vertical, meaning make a big hump with the, or a mountain out of the waste. Kind of like you see if you're going to Pensacola off the I-10, you set a big mountain that keeps growing. In this case, we're only allowed to come back up. It's a hole now, it's old dirt pit. So we're only allowed to come back up to the pre-dirt pit grades. Basically, a little level on top, just enough to let stormwater runoff. So that's important to note that as well. Did that help you?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm under the impression from talking to other land, because I have, of course, been calling some landfills, that you can get permitted to go above the ground level. Is that not correct, what I've been told from?
No, that's a specific rule for Mobile County. Any other county, you could go basically at a four-to-one with a variance, you'd go almost three-to-one slopes, which is pretty steep. But Mobile County has the rule that if it's a pre-sixing dirt pit, which this is, then you can only go back to grade. Fill it back up the hole that you dug out. That's what allows you to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so John Kelly is not going to speak on this topic, correct? Okay. Our second person who has signed up, and I believe I'm reading this correctly, is Charles Williams. 8760 Belmont Park Drive.
No, that's back to...
Okay, so he was on the wrong list as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, our third speaker signed up, or really the first person to speak against, is Ted Hincken? Hincken, Ted Hincken. And please spell your name for the court reporter. And you'll have three minutes to address the commission. One minute, 30 seconds, and then the bell will ring.
Thank you. My name is Ted Hincken, H-E-N-K-E-N. I live at 4221 Lewis Loop Road on Theodore, Alabama 36582. I've been a property owner on Fowl River for 42 years and a permanent resident 15 years. In 2017, the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program conducted a watershed management plan for Fowl River. As they asked for citizen input on the study, I volunteered to be a citizen review. At the conclusion of the study, they asked for volunteer water quality monitors that would be able to help monitor the health of the river. Myself and seven others, and there's a number of them in here, volunteered and have been doing water quality monitoring once a month for seven years. And we report our data into Alabama Water Watch, which is run out of Auburn University. We, I am also, I continue to participate with Mobile Bay National Estuary Program, and I am now the Mobile County co-chair for the Citizen Action Committee. The comments that I have here are not related to Mobile Bay National Estuary Program. They're my own comments. I've reviewed the application for the Emerald Coast CND landfill and feel it should not get local approval. I've applied, I'm appalled at a statement that the engineer and the owner made that there would be no water coming off this landfill. I don't know how that's possible, but they did make that statement and think the owner made it on television. And if the water doesn't come off the property, then it goes down and it goes into the groundwater. And Fowl River is a spring-fed river, so it's getting a lot of the water off of that. So I don't want to be the first person, and also, the owner said that they would, they'd only have to monitor the outfall every six months. And there is no liner in the pit, and there is no groundwater plant. So I might be the first person, or one of my other water quality monitors might be the first person that alerts us that we've got a problem coming out of this landfill and showing up in Fowl River. Also, there's an issue as far as the first item on the application is, is how does this match up with the solid waste management plan? Solid waste management plan only said... Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
He has another minute?
No, ma'am, his time ran out.
Mr. Hincken? Would you complete the last thing that you were about to say?
Well, the first item on the application was that it had to meet the solid waste management plan. The only thing in a solid waste management plan that connects to this is there's a, back in 2015, when it was promulgated, was that there would be a landfill south of I-10 in order to take care of development. In 2018, the Esprilla CND landfill was permitted and is in operation. And I talked to the owner, and he said currently they're only getting about half the waste that they were permitted for.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cherie, let me interrupt again. I just want to make sure. Mr. Kelly, you were here to speak about your subdivision, correct? Not about the landfill?
Well, I like to speak about the landfill. For private landfill, we haven't much speak.
Okay, that's not a landfill. That's a dirt pit. And we have, the county does not permit dirt pits. That'll be an issue. They get their permit directly from ADEM, not from the county. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because you were signed up, and I saw you come back in. I didn't want to take away from your opportunity to speak. Thank you, Cherie. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Kurt Wilson. And make sure to speak directly into the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Wilson. Address 11524 Murray Road in Theodore. My name is Kurt Wilson, address 11524 Murray Road in Theodore. And I'm here in opposition of pending landfill application. This proposal is inconsistent with the county's own solid waste management plan as it define as to its defined needs. When the current plan was approved in 2015, it specified the county's landfills as then having 217 years of unused capacity. Using the county's own data, we still have a minimum of 177 years of capacity remaining. There is no need for another landfill. We already have ample, even excessive, capacity. The 2015 plan did identify the need for a landfill south of Interstate 10. Since then, the Estefeller C and D landfill has opened south of I-10 and less than two miles from the proposed site here. This not only satisfied the need for a landfill more convenient to industries and other South County solid waste generators, it further expanded the county's already excessive capacity. There is no need for another landfill south of I-10. Ignoring for a moment the other critical risk this proposal poses to safety, property values, and the environment, what is being proposed by TIGS Holdings simply fails to comply with the county's solid waste management plan. The formally approved and recognized roadmap, the code of Alamo specifically directs the county commission to adhere to. While I believe the facts and unnecessary risks associated with this landfill far outweigh the perceived benefit, common sense and the way of today's politics cause one to suspect the profit potential with this venture could cause special interest to bring pressure to bear, to ignore the facts, and simply rubber stamp this. Even if that pressure were to come, approving this is not the right thing to do. It may or may not be a coincidence that this application comes sliding in for action as the current 10-year solid waste management plan is sunsetting, which it does at the end of this year. At an absolute minimum, the county should delay action on this or any other landfill proposal until the new solid waste plan is approved and more current data is available. And I think to summarize, I would just borrow the wise words Commissioner Doitt offered a moment ago, enough is enough, we don't need it. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Richard Becker.
Good morning. My name is Richard Becker. I live at 3130 Cumberland Road in Theodore. I've lived on Fowl River since 1999. I'm retired from Bellingrath Gardens and Home, where I worked as the financial controller for over 18 years. This watershed management plan that we have that that we've mentioned laid out a roadmap for protecting and improving the things that matter most to the residents in the area. Among those are water quality, obviously, fishing and recreation, environmental health and safety, culture and heritage, shoreline protection and restoration, and public access. The watershed management plan identifies sediment as a major pollutant that degrades habitat and impairs water quality. Stormwater runoff from unlined landfills, even those limited to construction and demolition debris, may leach heavy metals into the water table or alter the pH of the runoff. Digging in an unlined landfill, especially one that's a former borrow pit, can disrupt natural hydrology and degrade downstream water quality. As you know, this proposed landfill drains into Fowl River, and Fowl River drains into sensitive estuary areas, including seagrass beds, oyster reefs. The watershed management plan stresses that protecting these resources requires minimizing upland disturbances such as poorly sited landfills. The watershed management plan calls for and promotes goals of sustainable practices that support long-term ecological and community health. A landfill would conflict with these goals by reducing incentives to recycle as well as adversely affecting water quality and sensitive habitats. I'm lucky enough to live on the river, and I enjoy it very much, as you can imagine. But this project will affects people that don't live on the river. It affects everybody within the watershed, and so all the schools and daycare centers and churches and subdivisions and on and on. And we all unfortunately know about the problems associated with unmonitored groundwater, and there are very little monitoring involved here. I think we'd be foolish to approve this project. It does not work toward the defined goals of the watershed management plan, and it only has the potential to cause harm to our families and our river. Please do not approve this project, and thank you for your time.
The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is, I hope I get this right, Ernest Light Baxter.
Right, no, I didn't get it right. Please spell your name for the court reporter when you get down.
My name is Ernest Light Bourne, spelled L-I-G-H-T-B-O-U-R-N-E. And I'm sorry, in one sense, that we don't use the original etymology, which is Lech Bern, which is the same as Fairbrook, and it would be incorrectly spelled. My address is 4131 Lewis Loop Road South in Theodore, 36582. Our families used our property on the river for nearly 40 years for recreational purposes. We moved down there permanently as residents in 2014. I'm also a volunteer water quality monitor. I do have concerns on this project, but my purpose today is to bring to your attention an online questionnaire pertaining to this landfill. Fowl River resident Ron Kalifeh, that's spelled K-A-L-I-F-E-H, put together a survey asking respondents to reply yes, no to the question. Are you in favor of the construction and demolition landfill being proposed in the Fowl River watershed? Comments are invited. The link was spread through social media, including Facebook and Nextdoor, as well as email. The survey results, including the comments, were mailed just emailed yesterday to landfill comments at mobilecountyal.gov. Unfortunately, Ron could not attend this meeting, but he did ask me to present a summary. We realize it's not a scientifically randomized survey, but we do believe it's captured a range of deeply held concerns among your constituents. I encourage you commissioners to read the responses to the survey, along with the many other comments I'm sure you just leave along the way. As of Sunday evening, the survey collected 187 responses. 185 voted no, they did not wish to see the landfill. There were two yes responses. Interestingly, one of the yes responses included the comment, "It would be nice to have a place close by, as long as it did not affect the watershed." Among the 185 known responses, it's precisely that possibility of harm to the watershed that's a major reason for their opposition. Repeatedly, respondents stressed the current cleanliness of Fowl River and the need to maintain Some respondents questioned how effectively the dump materials would be monitored. Not all concerns were limited to water quality. Residents neighboring the proposed site expressed concerns about increased traffic and other factors negatively affecting their safety, quality of life, and property values. To reiterate, I would like to encourage the commissioners to read the responses to the survey, to see the scope of community concern, and to ensure that in your decision, you satisfactorily address these concerns to preserve the property values and quality of life of your affected constituents. In addition to the emailed survey, I do have copies today if you'd like to have them. By the way, I want to slide in a personal note. I applaud the commission for all the work you've done to expand access to the whole community, to the water resources in this county. You've done some really impressive projects in the last few years. Keep it up, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Light Bourne, Mr. Light Bourne, did you have did you have a did you say you had a document you wanted to leave?
Yes.
Okay, would you?
He wants you guys to to read the documents, the comments and the survey comments. I'll make they make three copies, I'll get these to y'all.
All right, and we need to make it a part of the official record for the hearing as well.
Very much, very well.
Excuse me, commissioners, let me insert that we did receive that email yesterday, and that along with all the other comments we've received will be included in the report we sent to you.
Okay, thank you.
The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Mr. Ted Lathan. Speak into the mic and state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Ted Lathan, and I live at 1159 Pioneer Road. And my home and property, you know, or waterfront on Fowl River, I've lived there for several years. I want to thank the commissioners, Doitt, Hudson, and Ludgood for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I was born in Mobile and have lived in District 1, 2, and 3. I know I now have my residence on Fowl River for over 20 years. I mentioned that I've lived in all three districts, you know, of Mobile County, so I consider it my home, not just District 3. But, you know, somebody asks me where I'm from, I say Mobile. You can pass easily between all three districts and enjoy the benefits of each one. I'm here today to express my concerns related to the proposal of installing the C and D landfill in the watershed of Fowl River. I oppose the application and permit to move forward with this project. We don't need this, and the threats of water contamination in our area are substantial. Fowl River is a pristine natural resource within Mobile County. It's a treasure for all residents in Mobile that should be protected and respected for its beauty and source of recreation for boaters, fishermen, water sports, and sightseers. There are approximately 20,000 people who are residents within the Fowl River watershed. Contamination of the river water and underground aquifers could have catastrophic impact on drinking water, recreational use of the river, community perception, and loss of property values. This would also present health hazards to those exposed. I want to commend Commissioner Doitt with cooperation of Commissioner Hudson and Ludgood for improving access to outdoor projects like Memories Boat Launch Boat Launch to allow smaller boats, kayaks, and handicap use, Cedar Point Pier for pier fishermen, and Bayfront Park for family use. This type of progress we need for our children, residents, and visitors, we need to protect, you know, our natural resources of in Fowl River is truly a gem in South Mobile County. I'm asking you to continue progress, you know, such as these projects. They're all good examples of moving forward. Approving another landfill is a step backwards. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Billy Lowe. Make sure to speak into the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me? Yes, my name is Billy Lowe, L-O-W-E. I've been a resident of Urbington, Alabama, where the site's going to be, you know, less than an acre of a mile away. I moved to this area from New York City, living in Brooklyn, and I've been living there ever since. It's been a beautiful place, and I hate to see it get ruined, you know, over a landfill. I know it's not trash, it's construction debris, but construction debris nowadays contains concrete, and concrete is the newest bestest. If anybody in construction knows that, all the construction sites going on in Mobile states, you know, to how to protect against it. But my main concern is the stormwater effects. This last couple of weekends ago, when it's when it stormed real bad, took pictures of it, and you can see where the water ran, and everywhere went to. My question is, this is coming out of the old operational manual, is why they got explosives gas wells to test where they should have water monitors to be testing the water table, seeing what kind of anything getting in the water table? It also says that they can have a container for household garbage on site. To me, that's just one more step of maybe moving in, you know, household trash, but it says it in their paperwork. Our property home values will be impacted very much, I believe, but my biggest concern is the safety of our children walking up and down the road, and the school bus stops on that road. It says, the other thing is, who and what ways the roadway is going to be paid for by us or by Mr. Hunt? That road has been talked about being paved, County Farm Road, ever since Mr. Gary Tanner was county commissioner, and it hasn't heard no more about it till up to now. It also says it doesn't tell who's going to train the personnel on site. The service area said Mobile County, but in other areas, it said Jackson County, Mississippi, too. Why will we be taking in other people's trash debris? You know, when we need to site, you know, so to say, but you got Estefellers that way you got a lot more capacity. And there's where these other gentleman was talking about on McDonald Road where that bridge has been washing out, there's another pit right there taking in same thing, trees. But and they said only one employee would be operating have operating certificates that all of them, I don't understand that. Everybody working there should have a certification. And also, okay, I'm sorry, they said it wasn't no water crossing over that land, the corps of engineers, but it's untrue. You can look at your own map. I pulled up, got it, and it cuts across the property. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Mr. Lowe, what what was your address, sir?
7731 Pecan Drive South.
Thank you. Pecan, 7731 Pecan Drive South.
Yes, there is a second road path.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Luke Kizla. Please state your name and address for the record and speak directly into the mic.
Good morning, and I believe we'll have to spell this one as well. My name is Luke Kizla, that's K-I-S-Z-L-A. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak before you today regarding the proposed Emerald Coast landfill. Like I said, my name is Luke Kizla, I'm Government Affairs Director for Mobile Baykeeper, a nonprofit organization whose mission it is to defend and revive the health of the waters of coastal Alabama. I am here today to respectfully urge the commission to deny the application for the Emerald Coast landfill. Mobile Baykeeper has submitted written comments, but I did want to highlight just a few of the issues with the application here before you all today. The legislature has entrusted this county commission with the discretionary decision of whether or not to approve a new solid waste facility site. In doing so, the legislature was very specific about which factors this county commission can include as part of that decision. Factor number one is the consistency of the proposal with the county's solid waste management plan. The applicant claims that the Emerald Coast landfill would fulfill a county's stated need because it would be a C and D or construction and demolition landfill south of I-10, and the 2015 Mobile County Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan did note a lack of C and D landfill south of I-10. However, in 2016, as previously mentioned, the Estefeller landfill came before this county commission for approval and was approved. Additionally, that Estefeller landfill is only one and a half miles away from the Emerald Coast proposed site that we're discussing today. Thus, the need claimed to be filled by the Emerald Coast landfill for a C and D landfill south of I-10 has already been met. Neither the applicant nor the 2015 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan made any mention of any sort of deficiency of overall C and D landfill capacity within the county, and the 2015 plan reported 217 years of C and D capacity spread across four facilities. That total does not include the Estefeller landfill that we just mentioned, nor industrial landfills which can landfills which can also accept CND waste. There's another inconsistency between the Emerald Coast application and the 2015 Solid Waste Management Plan, and that is the Emerald Coast landfill's failure to include the mandatory information regarding groundwater monitoring wells. The 2015 plan prescribes a standardized form which requires in two different places that any dirt pit to be converted into a CND landfill use groundwater monitoring. The applicant declined to provide this information stating that because ADEM does not require groundwater monitoring wells across the state, they are not required here. But this application is pending before the Mobile County Commission, not ADEM. Just to be safe, I spoke with ADEM at the Solid Waste Division and asked them whether Mobile County can require groundwater, and they affirmed groundwater monitoring and cited a precedent regarding Midway Materials landfill which was required to have groundwater monitoring when it was approved by this commission. Further, the 2015 plan, including that application, were both reviewed by ADEM and certified as consistent with state law and regulations. Depriving the county commission of this early warning system is critical for the natural resources and public health and safety downstream, and this risk is not remote. In 2008, a construction and demolition landfill in Mobile County was found to have accepted mercury-bearing hazardous waste for a two-year period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cherie, I want to, I don't want you to come back and, Mr. Hudson, I know you're coming back at the end, and I'm not trying to correct you because I don't think I'm smarter than you or anything, but I've texted two CND landfill owners who have advised me that you can be permitted, now, they're not asking for this, a new permit process, but both of them are permitted to fill above the level of the ground. I just want you to think about that, and maybe you have an explanation, but I've texted two that have told me they're permitted to go above the level of the ground where they started, so just, well, that's fine, you can wait till the end, I just wanted you to be aware of it so you could think about that. Thank you. Sorry, Cherie.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Leaster Kelly. L-E-A-S-T-E-R Kelly. She is already, okay. The next person signed up to speak at the public hearing is Kenneth Rice. Make sure to state your name and address for the record and speak directly into the microphone.
My name is Ken Rice, R-I-C-E. I live at 11295 Ann Road.
I'm sorry, what, what road?
11295 Ann Road. I am speaking from being there 15 years. I retired as an environmental contaminants biologist and moved to Mobile, Alabama, beautiful southern part, and live on Fowl River. I was there for about two weeks and decided to go back to work when the BP oil spill hit. And I was the wildlife coordinator for the three states in charge of maintaining all the safeguards we needed for the wildlife issues. During my, during my period of time, I've seen a lot of different contaminated issues. I've seen more dead fish than I would hate to see. I've seen fishery closures, water closures, and I just want to tell you that all these means that they say, the engineers say, that we've got all the protective measures and all, it does not work. Water, as you've seen in the last few weeks, can be a boom or a blessing. On man-made structures, they fail. Water is a blessing to the environment. It re-nourishes our bays, our estuaries, and is very important for the living organisms around it. I just want to, I just want to say that the importance of protecting the environment, we talk about all of the things, the accessibility to the bays and all that you've done, Mr. Doitt, we appreciate that. I was involved in determining of getting $1 billion for this county so that we could put access in, but if you go in there and kill the goose that laid the golden egg by polluting the waters from this particular place, it's going to affect us all. This particular individual, this permittee, is doing business in this county. And he is in the business of making money at the expense of the residents of Mobile County. We want to protect our waters. We want to enjoy them and we want it to go on in the future. I've told students all along in my career, do not expect the government to keep you healthy, keep you safe, and the environment clean. You have got to get involved. That's why Baykeepers is so important and all these other organizations. We have got to protect these waters. If you love it, if you love the outdoors so much as you say you do, then do something about it. Protect the things that you love the most. Don't let greed get involved.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing, I believe I'm reading this correctly, Alex Rooney. When you state your name and address through the record, please spell your name.
My name's Alex Rooney and I live at 7583 Elon Street, which is approximately about 150 yards from this proposed site. I have three properties on that site, at that same distance from this site, that has water running directly from that landfill through one of my properties. The Fowl River runs directly behind there. There's been kids playing in that river from, ever since I've been a kid, going back there playing and swimming in there, and only a few hundred yards from this site. In the business that I'm in, I remodel houses, which means I take the debris from there to landfills. They state that, you know, there's not going to be anything hazardous. Well, all the lead, paint, asbestos is in houses. I know they're not going to allow truckloads of asbestos, but it gets through, parts of it gets through on trailers. The other chemicals that's involved in everything you can put in your house is going into this waterway. Now, like I said, this whole neighborhood swims in this creek mere 100 yards from this site, not to mention it flowing all the way through Fowl River, through the rest of the neighborhoods, through Theodore, Irvington, down to Codein, and then into our bay. You've got everything that's in your house, other than what's in your trash can and in your pantry, is what's loaded and what's going into this landfill. That's toys, plastics, batteries that's in those things, all kinds of heavy metals and chemicals that will be running off through this waterway. This guy claims, you know, the engineer, we spoke to him last time, that, oh, this is going to be no health problems, this isn't going to cause any problems, which you can imagine what's in your house that's going into our waterways. I appreciate you, Mr. Doitt, for reaching out to other landfills to call this guy out on some of his inconsistencies. You're going to find several of them. He will lie to you again, I promise you. That's my time. Thank you.
Well, I want, I want to, I'm not calling, I'm not calling him out, I want that to be clear, but I, I did want to make sure that the information I had received previous to this meeting, and that's why I want you, when you come back, to explain what's different about these landfills that would be different. That's all, because I just want to know. Thank you. So I guess I am calling you out. Sorry about it. I don't, I wanted, I don't want it to sound like I'm calling you a liar because I'm not, I just want to know what's different about that landfill than the two landfills that I've asked.
Okay. The next person signed up to speak at the public hearing is David Brosette. And please spell your name for the record when you get up.
My name's David Brosette, B-R-O-S-S-E-T-T. I live at 7260 Murray Heights Drive North. And 7260 Murray Heights Drive North. And this, he's talking diverting the water to the back of the property to a pond. That pond is a spring. There's springs everywhere. I have one in my yard. The last feller that was up here has several in his. And it's going to leach back and it's going to be more than just the debris that the feller behind me said. It's going to be, there's going to be engines, the oil in those engines, there's going to be weed eaters, lawn mowers, all kinds of stuff brought in here that's going to be pollutant. And he said there was going to be no fires. Well, anything that gets wet and gets packed down goes through a combustion. There's going to be fires, there's going to be fumes that these kids are going to be breathing in from everywhere if they put that in there. And it's a health hazard for everybody, for everybody, and it's going to hit closer to the dirt pit before it hits everybody else where we live. And that's all I got to say, I mean, on the subject.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Joey Clark. Thank you. Please speak into the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Joey Clark. 8144 Murray Hill Road, Irvington, Alabama. I have extensive firsthand knowledge of the workings of a landfill, and the construction debris is not just two-by-fours and plywood. It's everything except what's in the garbage can in your house. Shingles, gas cans, paint cans, as long as there's no liquid. All that comprises, there will be a smell. It will not be the smell of a, of a food-grade household garbage landfill, but there will be a smell. And yes, there will be fires. The people that owns it try their hardest to keep the fires away, but it happens, between combustions and batteries and whatnot. And I'm no tree hugger and we got to have landfills, but it is not good for the environment and being right there at the head of Fowl River, surrounded by springs that's feeding Fowl River, that's my biggest hang-up on. You know, let alone the traffic on the road with the school buses and all the kids. It's just, it's right there at Fowl River where it all begins. And I just don't see how there's no good can come of it. It's going to leach. I don't care what kind of dirt you put down, how hard you pack it, it's going to leach in the monitoring wells. By the time they catch it down Fowl River, the damage is done. It's going to be in the water table. And I just do not think it's a good idea. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak for the public hearing is Sam St. John. Please state your name and address for the record and speak directly into the mic.
Morning. My name is Sam St. John. My home is at 4470 Windsor Road South on Fowl River. Good morning, Commissioners, good to see you. It's probably still a beautiful day outside, but we won't know for a little while. It's beautiful at Fowl River, I can assure you. So I've been living on Fowl River for many, many years. I think we've been there for about 40 years. As you know, Fowl River is a beautiful, spring-fed river. It's the cleanest river in Mobile and Baldwin County. It's clean for a reason, and the reason is that the headwaters of Fowl River are basically protected and that it's natural wetlands, springs. We don't have any industry. We didn't have many homes, as everybody knows now, we're collecting many, many, many homes up in that area that's going to be a problem. The biggest problem that we are going to have here is that this landfill is actually in the Fowl River watershed. As you know, the National Estuary Program did a watershed study to determine where all the water comes from, the Fowl River, all the tributaries, and it was highlighted in that watershed study that the primary problem is going to be in the future that this watershed is going to be contaminated by things such as new homes, and we didn't think about landfills, but this landfill, unlike the other landfills that have been permitted, this is located right smack in the middle of the watershed, right on Fowl River. It's going to, it has to be monitored. That's one thing that the county commission can do. It is in your application, in your solid waste authority documents. The county commission can require and does require groundwater monitoring for this landfill. It's your rule. And, you know, we spoke with ADEM and ADEM says you absolutely can require that and that you have required it in the past, so that is something unlike the stormwater and subdivision regulations, you're very limited, but in this case you can control this. And as the other gentleman mentioned, CND landfills have every chemical you can know. I mean, every paint thinner, every kind of heavy metal, every kind of chemical toxin, it's all in there. And so that's a real problem, but, but you can prevent it, so please help us and prevent this landfill. Thank you so much.
That concludes the speakers who had signed up.
That's the end.
We have Mr. Hutchinson to come back.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will try to address, first let me address your comment you called me out on. That, yes, ADEM allows a three-to-one slope on your landfill. We would prefer that. As a landfill designer, that's, that's what we want to do. Three-to-one with a variance, four-to-one standard application. And in this case, in Mobile County, they have their own rule about only being up even with the property. And that's a fairly recent rule. That's why, that's why you see.
Because I want to be clear that I'm not calling some landfill in Montgomery or any, I'm calling, I've texted two in Mobile County, so if that's, that's what I was trying to get around to.
I've designed, I designed the Estefeller, I've designed the file of the landfills in the past 25 years in Mobile County, and, and they did have the slopes because it was not a Mobile County requirement at the time. And so if that answer, that you're good with that?
Yeah, this is, what I understood, and these are certainly older landfills, that's a rule, that rule is not the same.
Right. And that, that's a Mobile County very recent, fairly recent rule, five years, maybe. The, I, I made some notes as, as people spoke, and I'll try to hit a few things. First, Mr. Hankins, he mentioned us saying no water is running off the site. I'm not sure, I apologize if it says that somewhere, but our application clearly talks about ponds and the discharge and water will run off the site. I mean, we, we made one comment about it not running to it right of way, it's up at the front of the landfill, but it will be collected in ditches and whatever's necessary to, to get it to the pond, so, so we're not, we're not at all saying water will not run off the, this site. The other question, Mr. Wilson mentioned, oh, about the, the solid waste management plan. I mean, that, maybe we're, we're being a little subjective here, but the plan does call for the landfill south of I-10, which is where this is. Yes, Estefeller was put in place, but the, the plan does not specify how many or a certain tonnage or anything like that, or volume, and... And it, it's not just us saying it's consistent, it's, it's the staff and the, the solid waste management board, authority, is, is also found that it was consistent. So that's, that's where we stand on that. The, let's see, another question, the last speaker, Mr. St. John, mentioned groundwater monitoring. And no, A.D.M. does not require groundwater monitoring on CND landfills, which is why we, which is what we stated. But if the county, if the county requires it, we'll, we'll certainly put that in. And, and so we're not, we're not adamantly opposed to doing that at all. So just let you know that. And bear with me as I, as I read through this. One question was about a, a household garbage dumpster. That's, that's just a requirement of the A.D.M. rules. If you read through our operational plan, it addresses that. You're, you're required to make some provision where somebody comes in there and there's household garbage, every load's inspected as it comes through the, the site. They'll, they'll take it. They'll, they'll take it and put it in a dumpster, have them put it in a dumpster. And, and that, that's what that's for. Just so the, that dumpster's taken to a, an appropriate landfill, not placed in the, in the landfill. And it's where, it says it's gonna be there because A.D.M. requires that we, we put it there. Simple as that. And bear with me real quick. Lot of notes on here. There, there will be no engines or car engines or anything like that in, in this. there was a question about the roadways. Our client, Mr. Hunt, will, he has agreed to, to pay somewhere in the range of $500,000 for, to help with the resurfacing of, of the roadway out there. There's a current plan for the roadway to be resurfaced or surfaced, and since there will be heavier trucks on it, the county required that he do that additional paving thickness for this, which he has agreed to do. And that's, that's, you'll see that in your documents that you'll be reviewing as well. And I, I really, there's, there were other good comments, there's just nothing I can really answer on, on any of those. But if you, if you thought of something that I didn't answer, or a question that you have, I'll be glad to try to do that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Or a couple. It was mentioned that there's no liner, that there'll be no liner at the site.
Correct.
And there's no groundwater plan? That's not a requirement?
Correct. First of all, no, there's no liner, there's no liner required for CND material. You have line-
It's not required anywhere then?
No, ma'am. And, and, and so also there's not a requirement for groundwater monitoring. That's what I was saying earlier, is that if the county, if the county decides to require it, then, then we'll comply with that. There's no, there's no, we're not requesting a variance for something that A.D.M. requires. A.D.M. just does not require it.
Did you have any of it? I was just looking through my notes. Okay. I guess there was, several people mentioned about how it was inconsistent with solid waste, our current solid waste management plan is-
That, that's what I was saying earlier about maybe that's a little subjective because the, the plan, the plan states that, that there's a need for one of these facilities south of I-10. Since that plan was done, Esfeller landfill has been permitted. And so the, the reasoning there, if I understood those comments, was since the Esfeller was there, that met that requirement. Well, it didn't specify how many or how much tonnage or anything else that, that was needed below I-10. So we, we still say it's compliant with the plan. I don't think the, the staff, or more importantly, the solid waste disposal authority did not disagree with that.
And where will all the waste be accepted from?
This, this application has Mobile County and Jackson County, Mississippi. When you do a landfill, you can, you can put any, any place on it. Whole, whole state Alabama, the whole state of Mississippi, but part of the, the host community, which is Mobile County in this case, part of what you're required to do when you approve these sites is you establish the service area, is what we call that. And so you can request anything. We just simply requested Mobile and County, Alabama, and Jackson County, Mississippi. Just, you know, if you look at the map, it's, it would, it would make sense. So that's why. No particular reason other than that.
What's the proposed life of the landfill?
Well, it, it, it's, it's really, it'll have a certain volume because it, it'll have a bottom and it'll have a top. Within those two is a volume. And, and that, that volume could be filled really quickly, or it could be filled much longer. A few hurricanes, and you really speed up your, your time of filling the landfill. So it's not a matter of time necessarily. And if you, just, just ballpark guess, 30 years.
What is, I'm sorry, Con, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Do you know if Esfeller, what their, what is their service area? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. I, I don't remember. I can, I can get you an answer on that.
Our staff can provide it too. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Public hearing is now closed.
Tina, I mean, I guess going beyond the question I just spoke, will you tell everyone what happens now, what's hap, where this has to go and where we're, what this is, the finishing of the process? And just, you know, this is the, the public hearing phase. I've, I've probably sent as many questions to Tina and Matthew as you guys have. This is my first go-around with a CND landfill, and I wanna make sure that I understand what, and, and reading the questions and comments that the, the people in the community have sent to us, because we set up a special email. And also, when I see those questions, of course, I'm not an environmental engineer, and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, so I'm, I'm trying to learn, just like you guys are. And if Tina, if you don't mind, what happens next?
Happy to give you an update and try to answer questions.
And Tina is our environmental services director, by the way.
So at the conclusion of this hearing, when the hearing's closed, the public comment period ends. And we collect all those comments that we've received via email and voicemail, and transcribe, along with the transcript from today. And we gather those together and put them with a report that staff is preparing. So we are going through all the details of, on the different factors and gathering information to share with, with you and with the solid waste disposal authority. So we will bring that to them and ask for their recommendation and, as to approve. And, and we'll bring our report and their, whatever they vote on to you within the next, by May 2nd, I believe was the date I had. So that by May 12th, you, you, the commission, can have a chance of time to review the report and vote on approval or disapproval.
So we'll, we'll have, the solid waste authority board will vote on approval or disapproval, and then it will, and they'll have a recommendation for you guys, and that's what I understood.
Yes. We will have a report with a recommendation, present it to the authority, ask them for their opinion, and bring that to you shortly after that for your review and consideration.
And you'll have an opinion also, your department.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
What was your, did you, is what open to the public? The, the, the solid waste authority board meetings? Well, yeah, when we have this back on our agenda to vote, absolutely, all of our meetings are open to the public. And I saw Mr. Hatcher is actually on the solid, I'm sure their meetings are open, oh, Tina would know, their meetings are open to the public also. This, this agenda item, Tina?
April 23rd is the next solid waste disposal authority meeting.
Okay, there's April 23rd. And they meet on the-
It's in the, in a conference room on the seventh floor. We can move the location if necessary.
Yes, conference room. The next time we'll have this, it will be within 30 days, if I understand it has to be within 30 days.
The commission is required to take action on this request within 30 days of the public hearing.
Has the solid waste authority meeting been, the date and time been set?
Yes, ma'am. 10 a.m. on April 23rd.
10 a.m. April 23rd, seventh floor conference room is when the, the solid waste authority will meet. Thank you.
And our meeting will, if you, and I'll call Sam, or I can call Ray, or there's several people that I can call and let you guys know exactly in case you miss it on our agenda, so that they can get the word out to you guys that it'll be on the county's agenda.
So could I ask, did we get that petition before we close out right now?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I can email it to you right now.
It's in the email? Okay. I'm sorry, I might have missed an email. If you emailed it to us, we have it.
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll email it to you right now.
Right now, yes.
So if you're involved, I'll email it to you.
One, one last thing. Thank you, thank all of you for coming down here today and participating in this public hearing. I appreciate it. Could we take like a, another five-minute break? All right. After you close the public hearing, before we start on the agenda?
Okay. So the public hearing is closed, and we're gonna take another six-minute break. And that's the last break, so whatever you gotta do.
Not five, not seven.
Me too. Well, you called, so you know it's called. Hey Carol Hunter. All right, sorry, that I was a parent.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order.
Where's your popcorn, Aspen?
This is sustenance. Commissioner Duett was supposed to bring lunch, and he didn't. We're doing the very best we can.
The Uber eats guy, he called, he got stuck in traffic.
Okay, Mr. Curl, we ready.
Item two, approve list of claims.
Some moved.
Second.
Three, approve appropriation contract with Azelia City Community Development Corporation in the total amount of $3,000 for operational expenses with funds divided as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Four, approve sponsorship agreement with Inspire You in the amount of $1,000 from District One Commission Funds for its Sisters for Life Health and Wellness Expo.
Some moved.
Second.
Five was voted at conference. Six, approve sponsorship agreement with Assistance League Mobile in the amount of $2,000 from District Three Education Funds for its annual Signature Fundraiser Fund for Philanthropy Music for a Cause Event.
Some moved.
Second.
Seven, approve reappointment of Pebbles King to serve as a member of the Board of Commissioners of Mobile County Housing Authority for five years.
Some moved.
Second.
Eight, approve reappointment of Jack Tillman to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Mobile Sports Authority to represent District Three for three years.
Some moved.
Second.
Nine, approve reappointment, excuse me, approve appointment of Carla De Priest to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of the County of Mobile for four years.
Some moved.
Second.
Ten, approve reappointments to serve as members of the Board of Directors of the Cinder Haber, Cindy Haber Center for six years for members as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Eleven, approve request of the City of Mobile to rent 106 E S and S models DS 200 voting machines in the amount of $250 per machine per day, and to provide 38 express votes machines at no charge for a total fee in the amount of $26,500 for their municipal elections to be held August 26th, and if a runoff election is required, an additional amount of up to $26,500 for the same equipment for use on September 23rd.
Some moved.
Second.
Twelve, rescind adoption of the resolution found in the March 10th, 2025 minutes, Agenda Item 22, authorizing amendments to the subrecipient agreements between the county of, between the county and the Africa Town Redevelopment Corporation and Restore Mobile to extend the scope of services provided and the authority of the President to sign all documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirteen, approve first amended subrecipient agreements with Africa Town Redevelopment Corporation and Restore Mobile to amend the scope of services to include a larger number of possible program participants in furtherance of the development of affordable housing in Mobile County with no extra funding required.
Some moved.
Second.
Fourteen, approve appropriation contract with Women's Resource Center in the total amount of $1,000 for its Board Books for Babies Initiative with funds divided as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen were voted at conference. Eighteen, approve appropriation contract with Glotilda Descendants Association in the amount of $10,000 from District One Education Funds for its landing event and ancestral festival.
Some moved.
Second.
Nineteen, approve change order number three with Rogers and Willard for Project Michael Square Revenue Commission Restroom Expansion and Renovation, revert the remaining contingency allowance to the county. The change order will decrease the contract amount by $20,446.09. The new contract will be in the amount of $872,154.81.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty, award bid to Gorham Air Conditioning Company for replacement of North Tower Penthouse Air Handling Unit Number Three at Mobile Government Plaza for their total bid in the amount of $337,220.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-one, authorize President of the County Commission to sign easement agreement with Alabama Power Company to install a distribution facility at 564 St. Emmanuel Street for the building maintenance complex.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-two, authorize advertising for bids for new parking lot lighting for Eight Mile Shopping Center.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, approve professional services contract with Robert V. Latham in the amount of $6,000 to audit James T. Strickland Youth Center in compliance with the standards of Prison Rape Elimination Act.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, award bid to Rogers and Willard for the Mobile County Sportsplex Phase Two New Restroom and Concession Facility for their total bid in the amount of $1,597,080 with funds divided as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve change order number one with tunnel construction for project new security gates at Camps Two, Three, and Four, the addition of new long-range vehicle identification readers and 500 vehicle tags. The change order will increase the contract by $26,490.82. The new contract will be $459,160.82.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve appropriation contract with Community of Mobile in the amount of $2,500 from District One Commission Funds to assist with the cost of purchasing and installing video surveillance cameras for the underpass site on Old Shell Road.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-seven was voted at conference. Twenty-eight, approve reappointment of Jenny Reese to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of Kushla Water District to represent Place Five Chinchula District for four years.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-nine, approve sponsorship agreement Victory Health Partners in the total amount of $2,500 for its Hope for Healing Celebration with funds divided as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty was voted at conference. Thirty-one, approve amendment to the subrecipient agreement between the county and Kushla Water System to revise the scope of work to remove the current plans for the construction of a new water supply well to provide potable water to the system's customers, and add plans for the installation of an elevated water storage tank to serve the same purpose, no additional cost to the county.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve voluntary participation, participation agreement between Mobile County and the Downtown Mobile District Management Corporation to provide voluntary annual contributions to the district in support of its operations for one year with up to four additional one-year terms with a 2025 contribution of $193,132.98.
Some moved.
I, Jay, is this, uh, this says a downtown Mobile District Manager, is that the same as a downtown Mobile Alliance? And what are we, what are we doing here?
Would you come to the mic, please?
Thank you. We don't have to pay taxes on certain of our properties, and they're identified in the agreement. So what we have done traditionally in the past is enter into this agreement where we actually take what we would have paid in taxes and give it to this organization for development in the area.
Second. I was just making sure that we weren't, I kinda understood, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't taxed, and then also, I mean, because I understand that we're not taxed on all of our properties, but making sure that we weren't being double taxed, I guess, so to speak. Thank you.
Thirty-three, approve lease agreement between Mobile County and Groundworks Mobile County for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation for office space at the Bay Hayes Building for a three-year term with two one-year renewals with a nominal rent provision.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve lease agreement between Mobile County and Keep Mobile Beautiful, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation for office space at the Bay Hayes Building for a three-year term with two one-year renewals with a nominal rent provision.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve lease agreement between Mobile County and the Mobile Area Interfaith Conference, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation for office space at the Bay Hayes Building for a three-year term with two one-year renewals with a nominal rent provision.
Some moved.
Second, what, can somebody tell me what the last three agenda items have a nominal rent provision? Can somebody tell me what that's gonna look like? Christina, you need your own mic today.
I'd prefer not, sir, if it's all the same. No, the lease agreement with Keep Mobile Beautiful, that is not really a new agreement in terms of the fact that we've been leasing to them for years. We do with these nonprofits, a one-year, a dollar per year nominal rent, just for the nonprofits. The two others, Mobile Area Interfaith and Groundworks, are new, and they're all, all three of these will be on the same floor, and they're each renting just a few offices for their operations.
Thank you.
Keep Mobile Beautiful handles our love-your-community work that we do, we partner with them on that.
Items thirty-six and thirty-seven were voted at conference. Thirty-eight, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvements Boardwalk Installation.
Some moved.
Second. How, when would that go out?
Pardon me?
When would that go out for bid?
It'll be, um, the 23rd.
All right.
It'll be advertised.
Is there gonna be a pre-construction meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right, would you let me know when that is?
We'll make sure you get the bid schedule.
Thank you.
Thirty-nine, approve no-cost grant amendment for Project Mobile County Blue Way Trail Development to extend the period of performance to June 30th, 2028.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty, approve change order number three with Ben M. Radcliffe Contractor for Project Mobile County Golf Course Project Facilities Phase. The change order will increase the contract by $4,680 and increase the contract time by 91 days. The new contract will be in the total amount of $7,878,539.75, and the date of substantial completion is June 2nd, 2025.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-one, approve professional services agreement with Hilltop Securities in the amount of $9,000 to prepare arbitrage rebate calculations for the Mobile County Series 2015, 2020A, and 2020B, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
Some moved.
Second.
Item forty-two was voted at conference. Forty-three, approve donation of the engineering report performed on the pier located at the USS Alabama Battleship Memorial Park to the Alabama Battleship Commission, the total cost of the report was $11,000.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-four, consider taking the following action on bids.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-five, approve renewal of the annual agreements with Knox Pest Control for termite inspections for the animal shelter in the amount of $135, and the Grand Bay Library in the amount of $250.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-six, approve contract with AFS NewCo for project foundation repair at Theodore Oaks Complex in the amount of $37,325.47.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve renewal of software maintenance agreement with CDWG under the current purchasing Sourcewell contract in the amount of $29,377.50 for NetCloud Mobile Essentials Annual Vehicle Internet Router Maintenance for the Sheriff's Office.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-eight, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Zoom Communications in the amount of $104.83 for Zoom Workplace Pro Annual for Proveit Court.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-nine, approve three-year licensing agreement with SHI in the amount of $29,367 for Microsoft 365 Software for Proveit Court.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Stormwind in the amount of $6,000 for IT training software for the County Commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with SHI in the amount of $4,132.73 for the Fortinet Support Co. Term for the County Commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, approve renewal of the subscription agreement with Bitwarden in the amount of $6,000 for the enterprise organization seat for the County Commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-three, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Eaton Corporation in the amount of $3,615 for electronic uninterrupted power source modules for the Revenue Commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-four, approve maintenance agreement with E.J. Ward under the current purchasing Cooperative Sourcewell contract in the amount of $20,310.98 for SaaS Annual Maintenance and Billing for the County Commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-five, approve 36-month lease agreement with Dex Imaging under the current purchasing Sourcewell contract for one copier, Konica Minolta and Konica Minolta BizHub attachment in the amount of $220, $222.86 per month, month, for the Sheriff's Office.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-six, approve 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation under the current state of Alabama contract for one Sharp copier for the County Commission Camp One office in the amount of $133.68 per month.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-seven, accept donation of the following parcel of real property from Mash Holding Company located approximate to the Africa Town Hall and Food Bank for the use of the Africa Town Hall and Food Bank, a portion of the west half of Lot 11 of the LM Wilson subdivision, of a portion of the Lot 1 of the Gordon Toolman Griffin and Reedy subdivision of the St. Louis Track, and being more particularly described as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-eight, approve request of the University of South Alabama for budget amendment to the existing agreement for the 1150 Newman Street Africa Town to reallocate existing funds to engage the expertise of Wiregrass Archaeological Consulting.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-nine, approve work authorization number four with Michael Baker International for bidding and construction services for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport, replacement of Bulkhead Phase Two.
Some moved.
Second.
Sixty, authorize, authorize a signing contract for professional geotechnical engineering services for Project Three-Not Chrona Road at McDonald Road and Goldmine Road East Intersection Improvement to Southern Earth Sciences.
Some moved.
Second.
Sixty-one, authorize Sixty-one, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from the property owners and the projects as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-two, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track One on Ziegler Boulevard in the amount of $17,308 for Project Ziegler Boulevard Additional Lanes.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-three, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track Four on Striped Drive in the amount of $1,250 for Project Bass Bream and Striped Drives Gray Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-four, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreements on Wheatcroft Road North in the total amount of $2,070 for Project Wheatcroft Road North Gray Drain Basin Pave, Pave for tracks as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-five, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreements for St. Michael Street East in the total amount of $2,500 for Project St. Michael Street, St. Michael Street East, and Reva Road Gray Drain Basin Pave for tracks as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-six, authorize approval of temporary construction easement on county-owned property, Track Five on Striped Drive for Project Bass Bream and Striped Drives Gray Drain Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-seven, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the public street as follows, Old Citronell, Citronell Highway bounded by territories annexed by the city of Saraland pursuant to city ordinance numbers.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-eight, approve preliminary plat only of the Preserve and preliminary plat only of Imperial Estates.
So moved.
Um, I want to understand this, Jay. And, and Tim and Matthew, they have met the requirements set forth by the county for a preliminary plat, is that correct? Have they met our regulations? Our requirements?
Yes, they have met the requirements for preliminary plat approval.
Okay. And Jay, your legal opinion is that if they have, we don't have a legal leg to stand on or deny them. Is that your legal opinion?
If, if we accept their engineering reports about drains and storm runoff, then yes, sir.
Second.
Sixty-nine, approve preliminary and final plat of Lucas Estates and preliminary and final plat of Longwood Estates and preliminary and final plat of Gracie Lanes subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Jennings Estates and preliminary and final plat of Victoria Oaks Resubdivision of L W M Estates Resubdivision and preliminary and final plat of Coden Property and preliminary and final plat of Three Mile Place and preliminary and final plat of Margot Meadows and preliminary and final plat of David and Stanley Sessions Subdivisions and preliminary and final plat of Mobile Oaks Industrial Subdivision.
So moved.
Were you able to satisfy that? I think there was a question about Longwood Estates, which is a three-lot subdivision, and there was also a question about the final plat of Mobile, Mobile Oaks Industrial. Were you able to satisfy those questions?
I spoke with both parties. Um, if they had further questions, they're, they'll reach out. I gave them our contact information. So, um, the, the first one, I think, I think they were satisfied. I will, uh, if they have, again, if they have further questions, they'll reach out. The second one, they were more concerned about future development than the actual subdivision itself.
She had asked a question about her, and I'm assuming she had purchased, that, that was a purchase easement that they had? It was...
I'm still a little unclear on the easement itself, but after talking to, to them, it sounds like they were more concerned about the future development of the, of the lots that this subdivision creates.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I, I heard her quest, one of her questions was something about an easement that she had bought. Um...
I think she didn't understand that it runs with the land, that the easement is not, somebody can't come in and take it back from her.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this subdivision that we're approving today doesn't affect her easement.
Commissioner, would you want to separate this one?
I was going to ask, I, I don't know, I'm sure it's not so crucial that it can't wait. Could we take this one off until we can make sure? I want to make sure that her easement isn't. I don't want to pass a, a final plat on the subdivision and then a week from now find out that it's...
I, I have not looked into the easement situation, so if you, if...
Let's remove the last one, Eddie. Um, it's the, uh, preliminary and final plat of the Mobile Oaks Industrial Subdivision, two-lot US Highway 90, District Three requested by Engineering. Let's strike that one and I'll second the remaining.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to...
Okay.
Just table that one.
Yes, let's just table that. I hate to do that because I know people sometimes, but I, I just make 100% sure that it doesn't affect her easement.
Thank you. We have that noted. Seventy, award bid to APAC Alabama for Project Scott Berry Loop Road South Resurfacing, Restoration, and Rehabilitation for their low bid in the amount of $730,076.18.
So moved.
Second.
Seventy-one. I believe, did you, you, you did vote for the list of preliminary and final plats?
Yes, I think, um, let's make sure Commissioner Hudson amended her motion and I seconded her motion, correct? Is that what we did?
Well, it might have been in a different order, but yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Seventy-one, award bid to Sea Thornton for Project Gulf Crest Road Bridge Rehabilitation for their low bid in the amount of $38,410.
So moved.
Second.
Seventy-two, authorize assigning a contract for professional engineering services for Project Gulf Crest Road Bridge Rehabilitation to Thompson Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
And Commissioners, we have one add-on this morning. Add-on number one, approve non-binding letter of intent with leisure, sports, and recreation for a water park, recreational sports facility, and retail businesses to be located at a site adjacent to the Mobile County Soccer Complex and future Mobile County Aditorium, subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna either ask that this be carried over or I'm gonna vote no. And it's not because I'm against the project, I want to explain it. Um, I got this email maybe Saturday night or over the weekend, and I haven't had time to read it. Um, but I also want to back up and say, and I'm not, this is not accusatory towards anyone. When I got off the elevator Thursday was the first I knew of the presentation. Now, I knew that, I knew that you were working with an organization to do a presentation and, and I'm, I'm aware of what you're doing and I'm supportive, supportive of the project. But I had no idea they were going to be here to do that presentation on Thursday and I, and I haven't had an opportunity to read this, um, non-binding letter of intent. So if, anyway.
I would prefer, since it's non-binding, it's, it's, it's a one-page letter that's just got about four or five different, um, points to it. Uh, both our attorney and our administrator have, have seen no issue with it whatsoever. It does require, uh, final legal approval. I am fine to move forward with it. If Commissioner Ledgood is in agreement, then I would like to vote.
Well, because it's non-binding and what this does is advances the additional information we need before we get to a binding situation. That's why I'd rather it move forward. So I'm gonna second it.
Should we? The only other question I have is, are we referring to the Mobile County Soccer Complex and future Mobile County, uh, Aditorium? Or did, I thought in the past we had determined that that was going to be considered the Mobile County Sportsplex?
It is, but the Sportsplex is comprised of the Soccer Complex and the Aquatics Center, it's just a different name.
Okay. My vote is no.
Seventy-three, commission announcements and/or comments?
I don't have anything else.
I think we've said all we need to say today.
Anybody out there? No, I'm kidding. I forgot where I was. Anything else for the good of the order?
Just a quick reminder about Saturday's events at three Mobile County parks from noon to 3:00 PM at Chickasabog, Bayfront Park, and Esca Tapahalo. The parks, uh, the Easter Bunny will be hiding, uh, spreading 8,000 eggs among the three parks and there'll be Easter egg hunts for kids in two different age groups. So come on out to the parks this weekend and enjoy some Easter fun.
So what time do, do the egg extravaganzas start?
So the, the events are from noon to three and we'll have music and face painting and food trucks and lawn games and all kind of exciting things. And the egg hunts will start promptly at 2:00 at all three parks.
Okay. Now, guys, everybody who has people who do Easter egg hunts, 2:00 sharp. Thank you so much and have a great week.
Item seventy-four, approve request for motion to adjourn until April 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.